Thank you Judge Tanner. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the beauty of the day. Thank you for the rains that you have sent this year. Thank you for the reminder that you are sovereign and that you love us and refresh us. Father, I pray for this court today. I pray, Lord, for wisdom. I pray for unity. I pray, Lord, as they grapple over important issues, issues that affect so many, that you'd give them your wisdom, your guidance, and your direction, and that you'd be honored by what they do. I pray, Father, for America. I pray for our stain. I pray, Lord, that you would indeed bless America today. Father, we thank you for loving us, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pray to be the steward of America, the steward of the United States of America, and to be the one who fulfills your sins, or a nation of your God, the innocent, with the liberty and justice of the world. I will testify, I am not used to being in a state where you have one of the innocent.
Number one, approval of minutes from the July 2 of 2015, for the administration of the meeting.
Would we approve the minute says?
Second.
Second.
We have motion in second, any questions? All in favor, please.
I understand, I'll cut it to me.
Four zero one. Okay, number two, budget amendments to consider, an act upon a budget amendment for the fiscal under twenty four, two twenty two.
You shouldn't have said page five, if you're seeing this more than any other question.
Question and number three. Is the metal detector over there broken?
This is to add to the additional detectors. The one we have, the orcs just found one, is helping to get one to open Oak Street doors.
Our responsibility is for security in our buildings.
The sheriff.
Sheriff. Sheriff in on this?
Discussion we were doing, she'd like to have those doors open. Well, we need, if we're gonna do that, we need at least two more detectors, two more people to do that one.
We need one more detector, one more detector. We already have one. We just need one more detector and two more people.
Oh, we need two, so we can get a minute now, they're considering the tax office.
What's for two?
We still got the electrical call for the work.
Here's my reasoning.
Yeah.
We spent seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to redo those doors, and then we locked one of them down. And I feel like if we, taxpayers paid that kind of money to fix the doors, we need to let them use it. And the number of people that come in, try to come in on Oak Street, a lot of people. And they have to go around, not that it's that far to go, but it's their building.
So have we done any surveying of the traffic patterns? Is there anything different that we can do with the layout, other than add on to what it is today?
No, but I've got all the numbers, and I've been keeping those for about a year. What we're running through the metal detector, as it is now. What we want to do is move that one over further, so it'll catch on the east side of the elevators. The problem is, is that we're gonna put the other two in front of the tax office, and everybody going through the tax office is gonna have to go through those as well, is what we're just wanting to do. And I'm telling you, with four people, it's gonna be a tough, tough challenge to do, because you're gonna have so many people running through that one, you've got all the other people coming in on Oak Street, you still have to remember that probation's upstairs. And what do we do when we have somebody that's wanted up there? I know Sherri's a little concerned about getting the people into the tax office as well, because there are days where, I mean, you're gonna have probably about 2,000 people per month through that metal detector.
So are you comfortable with that, having that layout as proposed, Sheriff?
With the layout, I just feel like there's gonna be a lot of complaints. There can be a lot of traffic.
There were complaints when we first put it there, too, and they all got used to it, so. I'm just concerned about the safety for the taxpayers. You know, it's the only department that no one has to walk through the detector before they walk in, they've got money in here. I mean, there's money. I hate to say that out loud, but there is.
Sherri, we have a couple of deputies over there right now that pay attention to my office. They're constantly watching, they're watching the body language of the people coming in, they're watching the cameras of the people before they ever come in the door. So.
But I, here's my deal.
Taxpayers go through a metal detector that's coming in to pay the taxes, they're helping this county function, you're gonna have more complaints, I think, because people come into my office to transfer their title, sometimes they don't have all the paperwork. So they stand in line to go to the metal detector, they stand in line in my office, they get to my clerk, they don't have all the paperwork. They have to go back, they stand in line, jump through the metal detector again, come in my office, they stand in line again. You're gonna have a lot of frustrated taxpayers out there. And come the end of January, end of December, some of my other months were going to be the plus case, and February, March, what are you gonna do with the weather's bad?
Well, they're not all gonna come in at nine street door, but someone's gonna come in Oak Street door.
We had lines with Oak Street were open at those times of the year, it didn't matter. January 31st, we had lines past the elevators to the Oak Street door. Where are these people gonna be lined up on their way to go through the metal detector?
Well, I suppose that's why we're getting two metal detectors, so they won't be lined up. They won't be out in the weather, I know that.
There's something to be out in the weather.
So my, I guess.
I don't think so.
I will say that, you asked the question, I need to judge your spirit. We are for the court. The court is on the 11th floor, the rest of it, I mean, it's a court building because there's a court in there, but, so.
Sherri, I just don't wanna be responsible for one person, one person walking in, putting a gun, somebody in your office. I can't have that on my plate, I can't have that. And it could happen. I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying it could.
Yeah, it could happen.
And on that note, I agree with you. I agree with you that it is probably the only place in all of all three of our buildings that is most vulnerable, and it could happen, and the guys are, like you said, the guys are watching it, but.
But they can't watch it.
No.
They can't watch it.
Why aren't they, if they get busy?
Because they're busy, they're busy. I've seen, I've seen it, I've seen it. So that's just where I was saying.
I guess my concern is to have four deputies doing that, rather than really working the streets, doing the things that I'd like to see them do. Yeah, I appreciate that, but I also appreciate that you're a service judge, and it did happen. Have we looked at all options available to, to us, or, you know, what creative energy we might be able to do to save some of those resources as far as manpower, and to watch the judges, being sure that he's being in perspective? Is there anything else we can do?
I mean, right now, we're paying, I don't know, noodles of money for when they take vacation, that kind of stuff, bringing guys in, it don't work overtime, so, I mean, there's just, I don't know where else you would wanna pull somebody from. It's just, we don't have any spare people to pull to put there, is that, is what I'm saying.
It has to be people who face, so they can't, they can't, those monitors, those two individuals, they can't monitor those locations.
They could probably monitor, but by the time they saw someone doing something weird, they wouldn't be able to get in there and do anything about it.
Well, the cameras are actually set up in their offices, it's not out there by the, where they're stationed, or the metal detector, as it is now.
Well, Judge, I would agree with your concern about the locked doors. That is a common complaint that we get on the property, especially on the Oak Street entrance, and it is difficult to see our elderly population parked by the curb, and then have to walk around, especially during our conditions. So I would absolutely agree with any type of effort to open those doors back up, not to mention the cost, and then immediately they were closed right after. I do think that, based on the discussion, it would warrant maybe a deeper dive, to look at any other options we might have, even if it's not a new metal detector, but to look at that footprint, and how they're, where they're entering, and how they're monitoring. I think at one point, we loosely discussed roping it off, and having one entry point, depending on where they came in, and that would still leave the tax office as it is today, because they've always kind of had a direct route for that, for their county business. And it would offset hiring additional people, again, to Commissioner Church's comment, for individuals out there that aren't on the, on the streets, kind of patrolling.
I think it is, you got two doors, and you got two deputies, and if they have to go up to make the rest of them in probation, you got one deputy, and he cannot cover two doors. So, I mean, you talk about manpower, but it is what it is. At the, at the airport, you got, you know, every lane has TSA officer.
But I would like to, I would like to think with our property in such close vicinity of each other, that we would have a call system of some type, that someone possibly here, or at the admin building, that if there was an incident, that a deputy had to go up to juvenile probation, I'd like to think we have a call system for someone else to go over there and cover. Maybe they were slow here, or some type of offset to that.
If it's an emergency, you're gonna have that deputy going up, and then you've got two doors, and you're, I mean, it's one or the other, you gotta, if you want security, or you don't want security.
Yeah, for emergency, that's.
I mean, you had, you had one up there years ago, in probation office, that pulled a gun, and got a gun up there, and was waving that around, took a taser out. I mean, you're not gonna wait for somebody to get from here to there. You can't do it.
No, I'm not saying for an emergency situation. I'm saying that emergency, deputy handle the emergency, there's a call system of some type to ask for relief from one of our other properties here, District Court, here at the courthouse, Sheriff Admin. I would like to think in an emergency, they go handle it, and then they call for someone else to come up and support that.
Well, in reality, as you can plan like that, you can't hope that somebody's here available. You got something that's going on here, or that's current, I mean, in your life, that can't happen. You gotta be prepared, and you can't hope that somebody can come.
We don't have people sitting in the admin, just sitting at a desk waiting for a phone call.
So I guess my question is, have we thoroughly looked at all the options available to facilitate that? I agree, I think that certainly.
I've thought about it for over a year, and I know, I know you're not happy with me, Sherri, you know, it's not a personal thing, it's, it's a security thing, that's all there is to it, it's a security thing, and the fact that the taxpayers have already patched with that door, we need to open it.
The theater rope, I don't think it's gonna work, I mean, you're gonna have to run the theater rope from the Oak Street side, running around to the nine street side, so they can get it, you know, yeah, they're gonna be inside, but.
You got your elevator.
You got elevator there, you gotta, you really gotta keep that entrance pretty well clear, just park it.
We're open in a can of worms here, because, number one, the security factor is gonna get worse, and it's gonna get expensive. They're gonna have to have two more deputies to watch that on the door. And how much that gonna cost? We're talking about taxpayers' money.
Yes.
So how much that gonna cost? Two deputies, additional deputies.
We do have that in the, what does security, I mean, it's a lot of, you know.
So it don't last forever?
It's a very, very.
One year. I agree with the judge, despite my money, the pros, whatever. People have gotten used to going around.
I don't know about that. They're still, they're still, they're on that door, they've got one near all the doors.
Well, they still, they still go the other door.
Well, no, they, they shouldn't have to, yes, Sherri.
There are three doors in each area, are you gonna, is it like one is an in, and one is an out, to close the revolving?
No, no, I am not closing that revolving door, absolutely not. I know, I know, you got three doors.
The door is on nine street, not on Oak Street. Is there not a way that we could set up maybe additional, any kind of parking, on nine street, to kind of help?
Now, that, I don't know, that's not my realm.
I just, I just don't know, with employees coming in, people coming in to work for probation, coming into my office, and we have early voting, I just don't have a way.
Well, if both doors open, it won't be so bad. You have both doors open, you have a security factor, one in the nine street.
I would recommend we have four operators, and we can use one.
A lot of hot.
But I would, I would echo your sentiments, Judge, because it is frustrating, quite honestly. Anything innovative, we try to do with this county, the answer is always no. We can't, and there's always a reason, and there's always a cost, and so I think a pain point, in all fairness to the taxpayer, is that we did spend over $700,000, and then it got locked. And that is extremely frustrating to explain to a taxpayer, not to mention the follow-up, but I think it is difficult that the answer is always no.
I agree, I'm not saying no either, but I'm not saying is have we exhausted all the options.
I believe we have.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm not opposed to what you're doing, but I can't do it with what I've got. And I'm, I'm telling you, there's gotta be at least two metal detectors there, that people that she's expecting, through that and into the tax office, and I've gotta at least have two more people. Other than that, we can work around the three doors and that kind of stuff, that's where you get one with your little ropes and that kind of thing, but if you're gonna open seven doors, you gotta have at least two more guys over there. And that's minimal. That really is bare minimums, it's just, I'll add, yeah, so, I mean, I'm all for, for the security of it, I promise you that, it's just the cost.
Well, typically, when someone walks into the door, and they see a metal detector, they're not gonna just go around, they're gonna go through it, they know they have to go through it, right?
Like I said, I mean, I just, I worry about, like she does, is what kind of crowds. I'm not over there there December, I just know that that's probably one of your biggest months, and everybody's walking in the door, and that's the coldest one, one of our coldest months.
I know. Sherri, here's what I'll do, I'll get a sweatshirt that has an arrow pointing to me, and blame me.
I'm gonna sign it.
We've already got the sign back with the cell phone on it.
Sorry, guys, I guess we'll tell you this till this afternoon.
It is ununderstanding concern, I'm just also concerned about the taxpayer. I know we spent a lot of money on that door, but they get cut out in a rainstorm, or a blizzard, they're gonna be more upset.
I'm concerned about the taxpayer, as well as your employees.
So, I have cameras, and like you said, I have a lot of respect for the two deputies that we've got on the.
I do, okay. Okay, well.
There, Johnny else.
I move that, we approve budget amendment one, two, and four.
Second for discussion, because I do have a follow-up question, Commissioner, on item four. Carrie, can you walk us through this requested change? This is, was made by the District Attorney's Office, if I remember correctly, and on some of the grants that they were expecting. So this was a change in terms of what was presented to the full court, if you wouldn't mind walking us through that.
If you're probably aware, we gave a recent $67,000, we ran audit debt for our 30 prevention grant. During the grant process, after we were awarded, we found out that some of our matching funds were locked, in fact, wanted to match the funds, over $11,000, short this year, to have our 20% match. So we're asking for the 20%, not the full 20%, of the $9,000, of course, that 20% match. This will be basically a one-time thing, because this first year will light a lot of cap equipment, and this, most of this money will be going towards cap insurance.
And this will be a brand-new division, that will be a partnership of the City of Amarillo, Potter County, and Randall County.
I think there are a total of 14 towns, but those aren't the.
Those will, we'll also have a DPS officer, and those will make up the core, and then we'll have 13 counties that we can operate in, and they're all.
And it's the Automobile Burglary and Theft Prevention Authority, and I show here via the notes, it's scheduled to start September 1 of 2015. Do we think that will still occur with some of the dollars that, that everybody's still playing with for the grant match?
Yes, I'll give you.
Okay. And, and this may be a question for Randall, I can certainly follow up with him, if there, will the court be kept up to speed in terms of how effective the new division is gonna be, and Sheriff, I don't know, maybe you can answer that.
We actually hired a coordinator for the deal, and so they're, they'll have to keep stats and everything like that for re- returning grant, so we'll have the other information for you when we bring it to.
Thank you, very.
Good question.
Yeah, do we have a, do we have a motion to ask?
I do have a motion. You do.
I'm sorry, I just.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion, you're saying all in favor, you got your, raise your right hand. Four to one. What'd you say?
One, two.
Yes. Okay, vouchers. To consider an act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers process by the County Manager's Office, the period July 8 of 2015 through July 22nd, 2015, check numbers 163380 through 163654, and wire transfers 576 through 582, in the amount of $2,203,097.95. Do I have a motion, or any questions?
I approve the vouchers for checks as well in the County, and the wire 576, adding to the amount of $2,200,000, and that's a possible.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion, the second, any questions?
I do have a couple of questions for the court. Page number eight of 31, check number 163498, to replace a overhead door in the detention center, I'm not sure if this was just wear and tear, or a result of an accident.
Just wear and tear.
And then page nine of 31, Sheriff, as well, check number 163508, applied concept, the radar, roughly $9,000.
Radar detectors for our units, whether it's type number four.
It's through the jack rip. Thank you, Judge.
Okay. I have a motion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Time's up.
Check.
Number two, y'all voted for the one, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, treasures report, to recognize the following, the monthly treasures report, and quarterly investment report. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, just real quickly, our total investment amount this morning is $14,428,787.19. That's total investments, with our total cash availability is $25,785,657.60. And if you look in your investment report on page eight, you'll see comparison that we're doing very well. All this well there, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and then if you'll go over to page 20, a couple of real quick things I'll bring you up to date on our investments. The $3 million will expire, or the April 30th expired, and so the interest there is recorded, and this is on our seeders. $7 million, now, as of July 2nd, we started earning the 40 basis points, so that is now in effect. And then we rolled over the third, $3 million, and it will mature July 30th, and we'll go ahead and reinvest that as well. So that's just kind of where we are today.
We missed you.
The deal.
Quickly, and just a quick question, in terms of the follow-up from the A and B accounts on your last report, anything for the cleanup?
Clean up?
Yeah, the A and B accounts, that, was it indirectly put, I'm gonna say incorrect, in to offset some of the dollar amounts?
Was this for the investment that they put into upon return?
Correct.
We're just leaving it as it is?
I'm still on.
And we should have it run into a cash flow issue, everyone actually will.
The $7 million, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Of the seeders, okay, yes. That is still invested, and it should, we still should be able to go ahead and do that through the whole year, and not have to take that out. That's the plan, because we are, as you saw, our numbers are really good. But if we have to, we can move that money, and there not be a penalty.
We won't, then we can.
But right now, all is the same, and nothing's changed, but I will let you know if we do have to make any changes there. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Number five, insurance report, to recognize insurance for public report, lands, or anything?
Land, not land.
Okay.
There is not anything.
Nothing, nothing unusual. All right, so recognized, so many questions over there? Number six, tax abatement, City of Amarillo, Gustan, Wind Steel, US Inc., to consider an act upon just paying a tax abatement. City of Amarillo offering a tax abatement to Gustan, Wind, Steel, US Inc., in taking further action. Gentlemen? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge. Commissioners and Potter County staff, thanks for having me. I'm gonna have to step back. My name is Brian Jennings, I'm Vice President, Business Development with the Amarillo EDC. It's a pleasure being here, I know it's a busy day for you guys, so I'll take just a brief moment to show you a PowerPoint, we'll talk about the project and its merits, and, and just. Okay, so for going on a year and a half now, we have been engaged with GRI, we call it GRI, we, there's some different terminology going around, but it's basically Gustan Renewable Industries. GRI is one of the largest companies in Spain, they are one of the oldest companies in Spain, and they are a global supplier of metals. So they do basically steel service centers, they do automotive stamping, and they do steel wind towers, the ones that we see driving around here. Comp currently manufactured by Gustan, they are coming from somewhere else, and so this is the hotspot for wind development in the future. Gustan is familiar with pretty much every country across the globe, they operate over 100 production plants in 25 other countries. They are very savvy about doing business in other countries. This opportunity, they are signing several factors that brought them here. This was a 13-state side search, 13 states. We lied to you, if you hadn't told you that we didn't have competition in Texas, we did it, that was quickly eliminated because of the proximity to their customers, their customers are the wind tower, I'm sorry, the wind turbine manufacturers. So there's a misconception that they're actually selling these to the developer, they don't, they sell these to the wind turbine manufacturer, because all of these towers have to be custom-made for the specs that are provided, basically, those. Taxation and financing options, obviously, the taxation from a corporate perspective, but financing options from the end-user perspective. So I just talked about the wind development that is occurring in the Texas Panhandle, and in kind of the, the middle of the country. All of those wind farms are financed by very large investment houses. And so because of the access to financing, because of the proximity to the number-one resource in the country in terms of quality and quantity, they are looking at this for their location. Favorable workforce conditions and workforce training programs. So we have a baseline level of skills that Gustan is looking at, welding, non-destructive testing, painting, sandblasting. testing, painting, sandblasting, and quality assurance to go along with some other non-destructive testing. They have, we, I mean to this region, have a great work ethic and some of those skillsets are ready. Gustan will be working with Amarillo College to further develop our workforce and this is really a game changer for us. We believe in the welding industry because it is a more finite skill set. It's not a oil and gas welding. It is a much higher quality welding. So there's opportunity for a community college. The project's scope, as we know it today, is a little over two hundred thousand square feet on forty-eight acres. Forty-one million dollars worth of capital investment. About half of that will be in the building and half of that will be in machinery and equipment. And three hundred and thirty jobs at full capacity. It is not often that our organization runs across multiple hundreds of jobs at one time. So we are always excited to see these projects come to fruition. It's great that we're finally coming down the end of the road. Our proposal to Gustan is a forty-eight acre site, give or take, you know, two thousand square feet, at Centerport Business Park. This site currently will be adjacent to Benchmark Street, northeast twenty-fourth, and Centerport Boulevard. I do have a map if you'd like to see it, but it is within city limits and it is in Potter County. We have proposed, and obviously with all of the taxing jurisdictions approved, a ten year, one hundred percent tax abatement on the real and business personal property. Ten thousand dollars per job incentive. That's a job creation incentive grant, so three hundred and thirty jobs times ten thousand, that's three million, three million from the Economic Development Corporation. That will be spent on railway and other site improvements. So Gustan will need rail, it is not currently there. It will also require some investment by the Economic Development Corporation to tie into the existing rail we have at Centerport. And that also allows us, as an economic development corporation, to open up the rest of our park for expansion, for new opportunities. We would never put in that kind of rail without a user because it then restricts your ability to develop the property if you need a larger user than, say, one sixty-five acres and I only got forty-eight because of the market put in the rail. So this is really a good deal for us as a community because then we have more sites that are, we can develop for companies that are needing rail services. And then the forty-eight acres, we have assigned a value of forty thousand dollars per acre to that, that's one point nine two million in property conveyance. That property has no value now because it's being held by the Economic Development Corporation. We ran a impact analysis on this project and Judge, I think you probably saw my presentation to the city council, I had changed this because this is geared for Potter County now. So it's even more impressive. But we're looking at new jobs, direct and indirect, about nine hundred and twenty-seven. So you got about six hundred more indirect induced jobs as a result of this project because we know we're going to have three hundred and thirty.
Mr. Jennings, can you explain the indirect impact of that? The job, the jobs?
Yes, absolutely. This is also over a ten-year period. So basically what happens is it is, it's the simple economic multiplier effect. Gustan hires employees, those employees need goods and services from other businesses in the community. And the idea is that once they ramp up and there are more people, there is a higher demand for services and goods and those other ancillary businesses will hire more people. Retail is a good, is a really good example. So we have more people shopping, more consumer activity, and thus more jobs.
So it's a difficult, that those indirect will be more available to the local area?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, sir. Two point nine million dollars in new property tax receipts. And that's over a ten-year period. And again, this is based on the multiplier effect. So the people that are being hired and employed by Gustan will go out and buy homes and they pay out the lawn taxes on their property. And that goes very deep on.
Brian, on the three hundred and thirty jobs, how many are going to be within the county? Or how many are going to be coming in from outside?
You know, at first Commissioner, I thought that it would be a significant amount because they do require a higher skillset. But that's not the case. The company has relayed to its consultants that have conveyed the information to me and the city council that the bulk of their employment will come from the local area.
We know that threshold in terms of count, I know on the application, there's three hundred and thirty-nine jobs listed. Are, I mean, are we expecting two hundred and fifty or two seventy-five, anything in terms of parameters of what that local count might be?
I would hate to tie them to anything and certainly I don't believe I'm doing that. But yeah, twenty-five percent of them came out outside of the area, and I'm talking the local area. So within, outside of region. I think that that would probably be accurate, twenty-five percent or less.
Thank you.
And then over that ten-year period, we have salaries paid to the indirect workers. So salaries paid to the nine hundred and twenty-seven of three hundred and fifty-one million dollars. Again, over a decade long period. Some of these numbers are, just to show you the impacts of these expenditures by the company, they're going to be a huge utility user. So the revenues that are going to go to gas and electric utility service providers are going to be pretty high, about two, two and a half million dollars. Sales taxes to the city of one point two five million, again, over a ten-year period. Property taxes to all jurisdictions of fifteen point six million. And then there's a whopping seventy thousand dollar permit for the construction there. My client is requesting a ten-year, one hundred percent tax abatement from all jurisdictions. Like I mentioned before, this is a very competitive site search. And they are still being hit up by our competitors. And I can tell you that our competitors exist in New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Kansas. It is a regional product, wind energy. Around this part of the world is, it can be, you know, these items can be manufactured in Kansas and shipped to the Texas Panhandle very easily. They can't be made in Spain and shipped to the Texas Panhandle very easily. Our competitors on this project are staying in front of Gustan, they're paying very close attention to what we're doing as a community, as a collective group. And they have provided even more incentives to try and lure them away from Amarillo. I don't want to see that happen. I don't like to provide you any information, but you need to make an informed decision. But we are requesting tax abatement to a hundred percent per year for ten years.
Mr. Jennings, this like the hundred and twenty-three thousand, is that per year?
Yeah, and I'd like to show you, I would like to show you something because I think it's an interesting relationship. And just, it's an example. Okay. The audience can't see this very well, but hopefully I can walk through it. So there's a cause and effect relationship here. And that is that the project, should it receive favorable approval here, would receive tax abatement on the real and business personal property.
We have a copy of that.
You have a copy of that. And I'll try and remember.
You have a copy we can share.
Okay, so the point of this exercise is simply to show you that should you abate a hundred percent of the property, the business and real property, that it gets the project done and the company will end up having inventory in their yard, works in progress, raw materials, et cetera, that the county receives tax on. Okay, so you abate taxes to get the project done, you receive taxes that will offset the tax abatement that you are providing to the company. This chart is just a causal relationship, I guess. It only provides a limited amount of information that we know, which is the tax rates as they are today, an estimate of the actual values of the real and business personal property and inventory. And those remain static. Because we don't, we assume taxes will go up in the future, we assume, you know, values on real property will go up, but business personal property will go down because of depreciation, et cetera. This is just to show you that there is a relationship here, so there's an offset. The real property is based on both land and the building improvements, okay? Land is never abated, neither is inventory. So based on the real property of twenty-three million, that's a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year in abated taxes. The business personal property is roughly eighteen, that's a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars per year. So that's a total per year of two fifty-nine, almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, give or take. We assume that Pratt is going to put this on, in this example, at a hundred percent value, which is not the case. Okay, so in reality, it's probably half of that. So the total over the ten-year period is about two point six million dollars worth of abated taxes in this example. Land and inventory, we've got about thirty-nine million dollars. And that's one point nine two for the land and then thirty-seven million dollars for what we're considering inventory. They will bring in raw plate steel, which is very heavy, it's very expensive, and it is not sourced from China, okay? They will bring it in, they will set it in their yard, they will manufacture the towers, and many times they take that finished product and it sits in their yard, okay? It doesn't matter if Gustan owns that property or if they have already sold it to a customer, it is taxed, okay? So it's either Gustan or it's a customer that is paying Potter County the tax.
So a significant amount of their material will be out and stored at the site?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's a forty-eight acre site. There is a large area for storage. There's also a very large expansion area, but they will always have the ability to have plenty of storage on their site. So based on this example, you know, almost thirty-nine million dollars worth of land and inventory is two hundred and forty-six, almost two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars worth of revenue every year. So the offset is about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars over that ten-year period. And again, don't pull me to this, it's just an example of what can happen. And, you know, we always use the term worst-case scenario and tax abatement. This is, this is the best-case scenario because they, they actually are supplying product to the wind farms of Texas and the Southwest and they're paying you inventory taxes. You're also receiving a significant portion of that one taxes from the employees that are employed at the plant. At least we gave a shot, right? So are there any questions that I don't have been over a lot? Pretty quick.
Mine's, of course, I'm tickled that we've got somebody looking at us to, and I want to be friendly to business, bring him in here, Potter County. And you had mentioned in your presentation that we get our money from that lawn taxes. Like the city and, I guess the city is the only, well, there's other entities that get sales tax money. But anyway, we're in a unique position here in Potter County because Amarillo straddles two counties. And so I know we can't force the company to do it, but I would hope that we can encourage the executives and their employees to live in Potter County. Because that's where we'll get our, how we'll make up this abatement.
I agree. Totally agree. I don't know how you could do that, but I agree with that.
A lot of times we see the executives go down and live in Potter, or at Randle County.
There are a significant amount of new developments in Potter County and it, I mean, we're growing as a community. I think there's only so much land space available and I, you know, Potter County definitely has character to the land, which I like.
Brian, I think this is a great thing and I'm loving the fact that it's going to bring in new jobs and all, but ten years, is there any, is there any way they would go for less than that?
Judge, that's a good question. I do have a guest with me who is here on behalf of the company. His name is Lee Higgins, I'd like him to, uh...
Good morning. Good morning Judge. Do you have any commissioners?
Potter County staff, thank you for having us. Glad to be here today. Brian did a great job on what's being proposed here and it is a wonderful project. I think it's a really unique situation from what Brian described about the fact that even with a ten-year, one hundred percent abatement, the amount of inventory that will not be subject to that abatement will be generating revenue, to handle almost parity, you know, throughout a ten-year period is extremely great, you know? So it's, it's almost a project that in a way, kind of finances its own incentive to a certain extent without that money, by, based on their activities alone, not coming from, rep tax revenue generated by other activities in the county. To your question regarding the, it's ten years, one hundred percent, you know, all the company would accept that. The, the company has always sought the ten-year, one hundred percent. Now, and I would say that as of late, and I say as of late, but in the last thirty days or so, this project has gotten a lot of attention from the other sites that are still being considered. And they have come back with increased offers, they have come back with new incentives that have been adopted over this year and a half process since we've been in this, since we started this, there's new incentive tools at their disposal now. And coming back and they're really sweeping this part of the pot, so to speak. And I, I can't answer on the head of the company whether or not they would, would, would or would not accept less than ten years of one hundred percent. I would just, on the errors that there are, a wolf is at the door, so to speak, and these incentives are critical to a financial business.
So when you say incentives, you mean cash?
Probably, yes, some of which, you're thinking of...
So the other, the other places are offering incentive of cash to come to their town?
Not every one of them, but some in the states that have locations that do have it available and are allowed to use cash have sweetened it with cash.
So my question is, if we, does it have to be unanimous? In other words, if we do seven years and the city does ten, and whoever else are going, does it have to be everyone on the same page with that?
The company views that, yeah, the company views that, that's always been, they want to, they want to feel like everybody wants them and they, they wouldn't want to assume that potentially three out of the four tax jurisdictions that might support ten years and one percent, one would not. There, there would be a question mainly because they're from Spain. And it's really been a big learning curve just to understand how our tax system works and all these types of things. And they're very, they're also very concerned about their perception and they want to be welcomed. I can tell you right now, some of the sites in the original thirteen-site selection were simply not, no longer on the list because the company didn't feel like they got a very long reception from everyone when they were there. And they don't want to make this type of capital just going to be here long-term and have folks that may or may not like the fact that they're there. And so, I'm glad, I hope they come, I hope they come. Thank you.
Yeah, I might add, just in terms of providing a benchmark and maybe perspective, so as you know, the county... so as you know, the county does not have lots of tools to our disposal in terms of incentives, so abatements are something I feel like the court protects for the most part. We've not done many, and so really, our biggest footprint of a tax abatement is Bell Helicopter, a local employer, and just in terms of threshold, roughly depending on the year, when this was originally slated, they were scheduled to bring 1,200 jobs to the area. So from my perspective, when I think about 10-year and economic impact, my threshold is 1,000 jobs plus, and I share that just to provide in terms of a little bit of a benchmark. So in terms of what they're offering and bringing to the table, roughly 300 jobs, but realistically, probably somewhere around 250. And so I, again, with the judge, really struggle with the 10-year, not because we don't welcome them and we would love to have them, but just because we want to be able to have that tool for another employer with an employee base that size to be able to come to the local area. So I would echo your, your thoughts, Judge, in terms of concern around the 10-year.
You're saying precedence, or...?
Well, I'm saying precedence, and I say that, I mean, the court adopted an abatement with no new jobs, probably a year ago this time, so we've been known to probably do a little bit of both, and so I think in fair perspective, just to offer that to you, but Bell Helicopter has really been the biggest in terms of all of the phases and tiers that we have supported and said, come and bring more jobs, et cetera. One thing that I did not, me and Dave stepped out of the room, but I expected to see a resolution in terms of whatever the support was with the application, and wherever this court goes, I would encourage us to add a clause of some type that we do hold our businesses to the new job growth, and maybe that's that they don't go 90, they don't go below 90% of the expected jobs, and I'm just throwing a number out there for discussion, but there's not a lot of team currently in our current policy of accountability for that job growth, and that has, has bitten us more times than once, and so I think if this court is leaning towards a 10-year, I would encourage for some language that we hold our business to keeping those jobs, retaining those jobs, and not just out of the gate, 250, and then a year from now, we're down to 100, and then we're kind of locked into this agreement, for lack of a better...
But we don't care, I, I...
Yeah, and I would lean on Dave for some guidance on that, but I, I realize I was also a member of the city council, had three more discussions.
The city did a resolution, correct? I think I have a copy of it here.
I don't think it's been adopted.
Believe it is, Dave.
It hasn't been adopted.
That potentially tomorrow.
Okay.
If I can just speak on, this court has the ability to terminate any of the agreements that are in place at any time, really, for any reason. Those are statutory, and so the agreements that are in place with the city really are non-negotiable with the company. Abate, it is what it is, you receive tax abatement or you don't. And so in order for them to be in compliance and set some parameters and all that, just to let you know that, that this court has the ability to pull those at any time for any reason.
But I think what I'm, what I'm saying is just in terms of adding clarity to the employer, if I run the other end, I would want to know what are the parameters that this could potentially terminate. So if I was on the opposite end, I would want to be very clear about those defined guidelines, and so I wouldn't want to set a precedence for going and terminating for some gray language in there. I mean, we want to be very clear about the metrics that we expect of these employees because I, I mean, Potter County is really taking a fair share of the hit from the abatement perspective, so just, I would want to add clarity for the employer coming in.
Sure, and I'm sure we can work with Mr. Kent to, to get that done. I will make one more comment on the propensity of this project to go somewhere else should they not receive 10 years. I think it's very high, I do think it's very high. Our competing communities in terms of incentives are well over what we are providing to this particular project. The state is kicking in 1.8 million for Texas Enterprise Fund grant, and quite frankly, I think we've done a great job of salesmanship to keep them at the table. I'd hate to see them go to some other community, community that's just throwing more money out. This is the optimal site, in my opinion. I think it's a perfect location for them, but it really is about the bottom line.
I think it's optimal for both parties to have them live, so I would cheer to it.
I have one final comment, and I'll quit, but our previous abatement with Coca-Cola, it was the same thing, they're going to leave if we don't do it, and so unfortunately, we always hear that, so it's always kind of the cry of the wolf. So when you really need us to hear that, it's difficult sometimes, because that's always the answer. And I'm not saying that's not always the case, but it is difficult to process that when that is always the answer, we're going to lose the whole deal. So when you really need us to hear that, I feel like, or for me, from my perspective.
But if you're on the other end, you have to say it.
I would disagree, you don't have to say it, Commissioner.
I would, I know. That's why I would say that. That's why I agree that it's optimal for both parties.
And we went down abatements through this court to double of what, what these people were asking, of course, a 90% abatement, but then again, this is just how, what we've done in the past, so I frankly, I think we need to step up and take this company and let's go. I think we spent a lot of time thinking about we're not going to get taxes rather than thinking about what we will get, and I think we'll get a lot more of what we're going to pay out, or not pay out, but not get.
And I think, Commissioner, there's a general consensus to welcome the business. I know that they briefed each of us individually about the business coming in, well, over six months ago to eight months ago, that this was on the table, and I have to say, I personally appreciate that process because it gives us a little time to digest it, do our own research, and really come to the table. So I feel like there is a consensus to support this company, I feel like where the disagreement is in the term, and how strong of an economic impact is that going to have? And again, my threshold is employees like, employers like Bell Helicopter, they're bringing 1,000 plus to the area.
And that happened over time.
Correct.
They're still building out there, too.
Yes, they are.
Still increasing it.
It's because it sounds like this one will go.
And maybe anticipate that might happen.
Absolutely.
I don't know if we, if we need to vote on this today, I think we probably do, but I would be in favor of making a motion that we accept the abatement for this company and let's get them here.
Was the language...
10 years, 10-year abatement, 100%.
It's just the language that...
Yeah, we got, I don't know if the, if we have to do the language first, or, you go ahead and get the vote done now and...
I'm not sure on what we want as far as the language, would that add language to our agreement, to be honest with you? I mean, that is the only condition of the agreement.
It's not a condition, and it wasn't a condition in the Coca-Cola agreement, and it really may be in terms of performance requirement, I'm not sure what category you might put it in, but all that I'm asking for, Dave, is that we do have a percentile that the employer bringing X amount of jobs to the area.
Yeah, and, and if I may, all of these agreements, these tax abatement agreements and participation agreements also are tied to our location consent agreement, so the Economic Development Corporation will monitor the performance under the contract, and if they're out of compliance, then they're also out of compliance with the tax abatement agreement.
Did you have such a clause like that in there, in terms of employee base, what to bring in and retain here?
Yes, in our, in our contract, yes, absolutely.
What is that?
They are, we mentioned 330 jobs, but it's based on payroll, that's from a reporting standpoint, it's much easier for us to report payroll, we also want higher-paid jobs, those being more than lower-paid jobs, so their payroll, when they are up and running at full capacity, is to be 13, over $13 million per year.
And so how does Potter County get in the communication stream in terms of even just a quick report to say this year they're in compliance, not anything really over the top or quarterly, but just to know that there is a compliance there?
Sure.
Because after this, we usually don't see any...
I don't, I don't anticipate that being a problem for us to provide to you enough horsepower for them.
And the city, the city has that right, correct?
Yes, yes.
And see, we are, we are drawing on the same terms of the city, so I, I agree, I mean, we have what amounts to, I hate to call it audit, right, but we have a right to review records, just like the city does, so we, I'm absolutely convinced we're, you know, that. So let me suggest that we take just what they were being asked to sign, let me just suggest that I'll add some language that we just reiterate with you, you provided me language in your contract, I will add some language about compliance and emphasize add that language, we won't just approve this, and so, I mean, I think that right is already there, but it, because if the court's comfortable with that, that would clarify that, all I have to do is add that, that will just make it, that'd be satisfactory.
Yes, and I'll have to work with you, I'll send you a contract with you.
That's all I need, that's all I...
I'm just going to take that language about the job, and I'll just add it, you just put it right here and sign that, and that'll, that'll take care of everybody's interest.
So do we need to approve this today before the city does tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
So you need this today?
Yes, ma'am.
So we can approve this, we can take it on from there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that change, I'll do that today.
Okay, we have done motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tax, that tax abatement for G-Stam Wind Steel Company, US, at 100% for, for 10 years.
Okay, we have a session.
Sure.
Motion, it's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Post for one.
Thank you all.
I certainly echo to the company that we welcome them to Amarillo and not even as though it really is a release to the tenure.
Understood, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, group insurance funding to consider next year, or who does you say group insurance levels for 2015, 16, to include authority of county judge to sign necessary documents. Please, good morning.
The Insurance Advisory Committee met on July 21st, you should have information in your packets with regard to that meeting, the summary, and the detail of all the different options that were discussed by that committee. Specifically that day, the Insurance Advisory Committee discussed funding options for 2015, 16 group insurance plan. This year, our insurance renewal brought no increase in fixed costs, including the administrative fees and the reinsurance fees, however, there was some increase in expected medical claims to the tune of about 9.3%, and it resulted in an overall increase this year of about 3.5% based on our current enrollment. Some of the options that were discussed by the Insurance Advisory Committee included the implementation and inclusion of a five-tier option, which would result in a multiple child tier. We talked about this last year and also communicated it to the employees that it was a potential inclusion in the future. Essentially, what this does is it allows for an employee plus one child rate, and then an employee plus multiple children rate, to differentiate in the number of dependents covered ultimately, the more persons covered, the higher the cost, each person has a cost associated with them. The Insurance Advisory Committee is recommending, what was noted on the detail is approach number four, to include the five-tier approach, and that increase in funding is represented by the summary, the, the amounts listed in the summary towards the bottom of the summary. The recommendation also includes the company or county paid portion of the health insurance at $714 per month per employee by the county, and an additional $12 per month per employee to cover the county paid life insurance and vision insurance, which is a reduction over last year's rate, but last year that rate was $16 per employee per person, and this year's rate is down to 12. For a total of 726 paid by the county, and then the breakout of $66, $66 per month for employee only, which is a $3 per month increase, employee plus one child at 185, which is a reduction of $48 per month, employee and spouse at $248, an increase of $9 per month, and employee and family at 349, which is an increase of $12 per month, per employee. Also discussed by the Insurance Advisory Committee was the potential addition of an assessment for a strategic wellness plan that TAC offers, and they actually offer two different levels of that. Because we are currently with Texas Association of Counties, and they have already in their possession three years' actually worth of claims data, the fast-track assessment would certainly be the best alternative and the lowest cost. The strategic wellness plan bears or brings with it a one-time cost of $1,500, and the Insurance Advisory Committee believes that to be minimal with regard to potential value as we move forward towards the 2018 Cadillac Tax or exhaust tax, and it would give us an ability to have a very customized strategic wellness plan, three-year wellness plan implemented. There would be no cost in additional funding that would be required to cover that $1,500 cost.
Where would that cost from, from to offset that additional funding?
The actual cost of the life and vision insurance is $11.70 per employee per month, and we have rounded to $12 for consistency and for ease of, of calculation, plus if you look at the funding that would be generated by that approach number four, it actually generates 4,961,189, and our target for this year is 4,96423. So both the funding of the health insurance generates a slight amount above the suggested funding level, plus a minimal amount in that rounding from 1170 to $12 per employee per month. So those two variances would certainly generate enough funding to cover the $1,500 required.
Okay, my only concern with adding this additional tier is I'm looking at the cover sheet, that you kind of broke it out with the number of employees, average total premium and employees' cost share, and maybe this is me and my perspective and my cultural background, but usually individuals of my culture have more family members, and so there are more children in that. And so I feel like the average of employees that are going to be affected, I'm just referencing that 73, and they are the individuals that are getting the biggest impact in terms of their insurance is going to go up with this additional tier. So I do have concerns for some of our departments that are on the lower salary range of what we offer, and if they are covering their family with insurance, which we want them to do, that is, it may make it more difficult for them by adding in this additional tier. I just, I don't want to indirectly affect those employees. What are your thoughts on that?
I certainly understand your concern there. The reality of insurance coverage comes back to the more people covered, the more it costs, and that's the thought process behind the additional tier of multiple children.
Just as, just as a curiosity, I appreciate you knowing that, just you have the bottom and, 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 I guess, the conflict, but...
Well, I mean, I just, I think about a lot of our single moms out there with multiple children that are wanting to carry insurances, I, I think, I honestly, my first thought was a lot, in Mike's department, you know, our housekeepers that are on a lower salary rate, and thirty dollars is a lot of money, and so, those are the ones that are being affected by this policy, and they are the, the biggest count, the seventy three versus the ones with one child at twenty five, and that is the premium that's going up. So, when I read this at first, and I, I discussed this with Kate prior too, because I didn't want this comment to catch your surprise, but at first, I read it and prepped for recording and thought, okay, kind of put it, and I wrestled with it all weekend, and I really thought, man, this really could indirectly hurt some of our lower salary employees in the county. And I don't know if that's fair to say, Mike, but that's definitely where my brain went after I wrestled with it.
All right.
Well, it, it certainly, that does represent the, the highest premium increase at, at thirty dollars per month or fifteen dollars per pay period. However, you're talking about, and the insurance advisory committee struggled with this as well, there was a, a lot of discussion around this, but the fact remains that it costs more to the plan to cover three, four, five, six people than it costs to cover one.
Well, in part, some of my math that I did behind the scenes, I just looked at a total employee base, which I just pulled five hundred, I think it was four something on your account, four fifty six, but I just did five hundred just for the sake, and I, I computed out the seventy three that are being affected, and so roughly fourteen percent. And so, I, I would agree with the insurance committee about it costs more to insure more, absolutely. But in terms of fourteen percent of the overall base of who's being insured, I'm just very cautious that we're, we're pushing that financial burden onto the wrong individuals.
Can I, if I can speak, we need wrestles this, remember, the insurance could be one thing, and I don't know if this is right or wrong, one thing kind of made me feel a little bit better, that was that multiple member families do have a family deductible that kicks in, kicks in faster than it would for, you know, one parent, one child, so they're, and I mean, that's, it's terrible, because you got to get to the point where if you need it, please, to enjoy that savings, but, but that did make me feel a little bit better, but I mean, I hear your concern is certainly because...
Yeah, well, and it's because it affects their, their paycheck every two weeks, so you feel that first, and I do know of families that don't take medical coverage because they're deductibles. So, I mean, it's until someone's really sick that they go and start, and that shouldn't be the case, but I understand them having to wrestle with that, so I just wanted to share that concern, because I really would struggle with that all weekend.
And Dave is, you know, I admit that there are caps on deductible and out of pocket that are spread and capped at twenty-two fifty or three, three deductibles. So, an employee that has, you know, three kids and, and two spouses would be capped at three deductibles. So, there is already some inherent protection in the plan for those larger families.
But that happens even without this additional tier?
Yes.
Right, and, and we do not take this, right, and that happens regardless?
Yes.
Okay.
It does.
There could be more tiers, and we decided make this tack only, only sees, doesn't divide it up to three kids, four kids, five kids. But that could have happened, but it, it didn't. And we strove with this, and I took the devil's advocate and was arguing the money issue.
You, really?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
But they swacked me down pretty hard. But, but a lot of things, I guess, what you could, could kind of think about is, you know, is it fair that someone with one child subsidizes someone that has four or five children? And so, you know, there's, you have to weigh both sides, and so, this is what we came up with as our best option.
Well, and I think the fact that we're offering insurance and rocking affordable insurance definitely puts us in terms of a level, level playing field. Like, I see these premiums, and I feel very proud that we're offering insurance of our level to our employees, especially what's happening in this industry right now. So, I feel very proud by what we're offering our employees and their families. And my only concern is that we are carving out those that have poor kids, and they are the ones that we need to go get preventative insurance and do all the things that they're supposed to be doing, and unfortunately, those are also the ones that have other socioeconomic factors, sometimes to no fault of their own, so.
That's a conversation we can take next month.
In Austin. Well, so we have a policy to do that today.
Okay, do I have a motion in second?
I'd move that we accept the insurance committee's recommendation on the health insurance premium funding for the seventh.
Do you have a motion, say, all in favor, raise your hand. All in favor. Four one.
Okay, number eight, tac template, 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 definition to recognize the continued use of the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool booklet template, template definitions as stated. Potter County currently knew arises the Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool template definitions contained in the booklet. This is the recognition that, that we will continue to recognize those definitions as they currently exist in the booklet. There was a recent Supreme Court definition that caused an analysis of those definitions, and the result of that analysis is that all spouses be covered regardless of gender. Texas Association of Counties requires acknowledgement as to which direction this county will chooses to, whether or not we want to, to change our definition or continue with the template And this is just the recognition that we will continue with the template definition.
What documents?
Well, there's not a, there, there wasn't a, a document in the, in the packets on that. Basically, we currently use all of the TAC definitions in our employee health, health and employee benefits pool booklet. And because of the, the recent Supreme Court decisions, they reviewed all of the definitions and just request that we notify, we almost worry we are going to continue with the template definitions moving forward, or if we would require a redefinition based on current court rulings.
Has it changed since this?
No. No, the, the definition is the same as it's always, as it has been in the past, it's, this has just moved forward with those templates as they has, have existed in the past, it's no, no change in the definition at all.
So, spouse means spouse.
Written in the booklet.
Or spouse means spouse, no matter what.
Spouse means spouse.
And can, as a follow-up, can we get a copy of either the booklet or the template, so we know what those definitions are?
And, and you should have a booklet with all the definitions in there, but I'll, I'll be happy to.
Even the link, if it's online, I have the pictures.
And this was to recognize on my, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, scattering. All right, number nine, contract with OAG for access to Part County Family Court Data. One, consider an agreement contract number fourteen, tax season number three, and one for the annual contract to share family court data with Attorney General's Office. The OAG pays one hundred dollar, one hundred eighty dollar annual for the access. In this contract, during the years since I've been here, we allow the, and you have access so they can do their own copies of our county data.
Completely approved the contract with OAG for access to Part County Family Court.
Second, for discussion, I have a quick question on the contract, page one of ten, the term. In reference, it shall be effective September one, twenty thirteen, and terminate August thirty first, twenty fifteen. So, is this getting ready to terminate or approving something?
No, this is a, this one is, we don't have one nineteen, we don't have the current one, all we're doing is reviewing.
Just reviewing probably, as I should, yeah. So, you just need my signature on this, Caroline?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all, you have a motion in second, I'm ready to raise your hand. Number ten, CPS cluster court, consider an act upon establishing a CPS cluster court in Part County, take any action necessary. I'm contracted by all the district judges and county court law judges, as well as Caroline, who attended the meeting. Judge Kelly Moore, the administrative judge of the area, wants to do a cluster court here in Amarillo, in Part County, near our courthouse, so we have decided, various meetings, to put it in the law library, because it's soon going to be vacated by the two employees there. And Mike, I've talked to Mike about having someone from the Department of Corrections build a portable judge's bench, so we can move it if necessary, and if we get to build a building. So, that's what we're talking about, it's not going to be very, very, very minimal cost of accounting. If they have a court hearing, the district courts will loan us, they will as well as a court reporter, so we don't have to hire that district court, so that he would appoint the judge to do this, and that the judge would appoint or hire his own staff, which would be a secretary. So, that's basically going to be it, and we need this, and the district judges are happy and thrilled that they're going to have this court to deal with the influx of a lot of CPS cases, as well as the county courts. So, do I have any, any questions?
Evidence on whether that particular area in the child, individual network, there is already been?
Yes, we'll talk about that during the budget. We're not, we're not going to fund the law library, we've spent numerous amount of dollars in that, so we'll talk about that later.
And is there a statute that creates this CPS cluster court, or how is that?
There is.
Okay, what?
It's, it's in the family code, and check two of one, I believe, and this, they're, they already exist in other counties, and I don't recall what county this one will cover, but it'll cover more than Part.
Will this be a full-time judge?
Yes.
And so, where are those cases being heard today?
District courts, county court law courts, are debuffing, debuffing, just one.
It's, it's just like, you know, there are child support court, it's exactly, course, exactly like that, except they do CPS cases now.
So, they'll be taking part of the caseload off of those current judges?
Yes, correct.
By the state?
Yes.
Yes.
And all we do, our obligation is provide, I guess, square space.
And what are the two courts that hear those today, county court and law?
Both, two-way and three-twenty district court, and county court law two.
And they were, and they were all in attendance, and they were all in favor?
Yes, as appointed, like, like Judge Bauer, let's assign it.
So, is that just, yeah, the, the custom state?
Commissioner, also, if, if, this, this works just like the four D court, in that if the litigant is dissatisfied with the result of a cluster court, they're saying appeal on a district court, and jury trial. But this, this will take the burden off of district courts and county law two for the initial hearings, the emergency removals for initial issues, which take a lot of time, a lot of, and, and centralize that. For instance, it will be moved to our office, because our CPS lawyer often is set in different courts at the same time, this will kind of centralize that, so.
And did the state just recently approve additional funding? Like, I'm interested to know how this?
Yes, it was, it was a new law, I don't know the name of it, but it was, it was due next year.
Yeah, there's a new appropriation for, for additional.
So, the, so the, a dedicated courtroom?
Yes.
With furniture and, and specifics of all that, that will the state also, about that?
Mike, what will it cost to make that a courtroom?
We're looking at right now with TDC judge, to see if they can make a judge that, we can't get a courtroom judge as a bench, other than the MAB, just collecting some chairs and stuff to put in there for the gallery seat. As far as, it's a, 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 it's
So I just need to have a motion in second to approve the resolution, but we've already voted on the actual, busy action.
Dave, you already have.
I make a motion that we, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and I directed it, I'm sorry to me, you're, I directed it for, obviously.
I make a, I make a motion that we approve the resolution in supporting of naming Loop three thirty five as Veterans Highway.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in second, all in favor, Rachel, I mean. Officer Row, thank you very much. Uh, number twelve, Froggen Bridge donation of recycled asphalt to consider an act upon accepting the donation of rap recycled asphalt product, Texas Department of Transportation, official.
So who?
This is just, uh, the same stuff we got before. It's just, uh, recycled asphalt, they dig off the highway. And they donate it to surrounding counties once a year. There's about four different piles we're going to pick up.
Second.
I have a motion in session, all in favor, Rachel, I mean. Officer Row, thank you very much. Number thirteen, Bishop Branches equipment of subdivision for roads, chapter two fifty three of Texas Transportation Code. Joe Mar?
Correct, introduce a visitor.
Sure.
A year or so ago, uh, Joe Mar and a group of residents out in the Bishop Branches subdivision approached me and asked about, us looking at the potential of, um, this, through the, uh, chapter two fifty three of the transportation code, possibly going in with them and redoing their, uh, their roads. I'm going to let Joe Mar, um, give the presentation that he's put together. And I think you'll see some of the, uh, needs that they have out there. And I've met with the overall group twice. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of interest, and so I'll let Joe Mar make his presentation then.
I'm going to let you do your presentation, Joe Mar, and then I'll get the, uh, actual pieces of need to go, okay?
Okay.
Wow.
Wow, I gotta act quickly now. You want to go ahead?
Sure.
Uh, Judge Tanner, Commissioner's Court staff, appreciate you letting me have a little time here, I try not to take too much of the, uh. Uh, I represent a landowners in Bishop Branches subdivision, which is a, uh, area in Potter County, about five miles, uh, northwest of the city limits on Tascosa Road. Obviously, I also, my wife and I live out there too. And what we're here to do today is to start the process or, or talk to you about a request for improvements, uh, to our roads out there. Uh, just a quick background before I start this. My understanding is Bishop Branches subdivision, uh, there's really two what I call Bishop, not even Bishop Hills. The Bishop subdivisions on the south side of Tascosa Road, there's Bishop Estates and Bishop Branches. Bishop Estates is much larger, extends much farther to the west. Bishop Branches, um, is kind of in between Bishop Hills and Bishop Estates. Uh, and was attempted to be developed by, by, fair enough, I think, back in the seventies. Uh, there were, were plats drawn up, there, there were lots cut out, some land was sold, nothing ever took off. Eventually, uh, landowners bought property out there, uh, started building homes. And, and as we'll, as we'll talk about here in a minute, it, there's been a real problem with roads from the get go. And, and really a problem with communication and information. Uh, but to kind of let you know how this is here. Ranch Road's our main road out there, um, and maybe it'll work, and maybe it won't.
You got it?
I'm sorry, did you show up on mine? Um, and you have to watch the front of the car here, I'm not a cinematographer and so, but this is fifteen miles an hour, which is very slow. And, and, and trying not to tear my wife's car up and just showing, uh, some of how Ranch Road is. And it's actually in some of the doors, the best road out there, that gets, it uses the most. And it was bad until we got rain, the rain we got this year, and now it's, it's horrible. Um, as you can just see, you have to dodge bottles the size of cars. And, uh, and it's very difficult to get up and around there. This was just something, we didn't have anything else to measure, if we stop on one of the rides, that's a regular twelve ounce water bottle. Uh, that is almost completely covered up, and there are many more rides that need to be, uh, really. And we just have some representative photographs to kind of show you how bad they are. So what are we asking the county to do? We're asking the county to improve, uh, all of Ranch Road, which is the major thoroughfare. And portions of Eastview Drive, Headquarters Road, and Hillview Drive to county standards. To assess the cost of these improvements against affected landowners, allow these costs to be repaid over a period of time. I put preferably this ten years, and that, that factor in there is just a ma- a matter of ability to repay it by the landowners. We're asking to do this under the authority of chapter two fifty three of the transportation code, which, which allows these type of things. It allows the county to fix our roads for us, but not ultimately a taxpayer expense. Uh, and to, uh, allow us to repay that, and since carry the note for a rest for a period of time. Not unlike in some cases, we don't see much of this anymore, but, uh, those of us of a certain age remember when you could drive around in, in Amara and you'd have a street that was paved on one half and not the other. Well, it's because, for some reason or another, the city hadn't assessed that half of it, and when they would come in and do it. Because the, the, the roads, the streets already were there and were paid. And they charged against the landowners basically on a fringe basis there. Uh, that's essentially what we are, uh, asking the court to do. The, how much would it cost? Uh, Sebastian is agreeing with Road and Bridge, been so kind to go out and make us the estimate is the best they could do. They weren't really guessing a whole lot, just trying to figure out exactly what they needed, comes up at about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Although, that estimate was done initially with Sebastian believing all of Headquarters Road, all of the east portion of Headquarters Road. Headquarters Road is cut in half, uh, the west half is already paved. Uh, the east part of Headquarters Road, since then, there are certain landowners passed about halfway on Headquarters Road that all have cut their own access to Tascosa Road. And they don't want to participate in this. And so the cost of, uh, of it, of Headquarters Road here reduced significantly. Uh, I, I throw this out as an additional, uh, some of those landowners I've talked to are actually, uh, interested in attempting to close Headquarters Road as a public road past the point of our improvement. Because it no longer affects them, they don't want any responsibility for it, and they have their own interest and egress elsewhere, but that's for another discussion. Yeah, this map just shows you, and, and the red is sort of the area that we, uh, uh, kind of carved out. There was some question at first whether the transportation code would allow us to carve it out, or whether we had to fix all of the roads and charge against everybody. The law changed in two thousand and three, it allows us now to carve it out and only assess the landowners that, that are participating and that are affected by the roads. The red shows, uh, the areas that would be assessed, that are, uh, uh, theory. The green on the roads is how far the roads would be improved. Again, Headquarters would only be improved about seven hundred to a thousand feet. Eastview would only be improved to the point it gets into Bishop Estates and starts to be paved. Hillview Road would not be improved under this plan, uh, past about fourteen hundred feet because there's some, uh, ge- geological, uh, issues with getting through the hill that's up there that might be cost prohibitive. I'll throw this in at this point, it was referenced to all the landowners that are affected by what we're wanting to approve. And, and Commissioner Church has been at two meetings, we're, we're a good part of those people who've shown up, we've had, we've had pretty good participation. We have several absentee landowners, but most landowners that are out there have built houses. And even some that have been improved lots have participated. And without exception, well, one exception, one lady just said she couldn't afford it, that she's also in the process of transferring her property over. And, and the people that are going to take it over from her said they wanted it. Everyone has, has said they are, uh, on board with doing this. You know, obviously, we think it can be done in a way that is somewhat affordable to them. Uh, and we've also come up with a formula that would be for later discussion on how this would be assessed. If that became the hardest question that none of us had thought about, how do you assess it prorata, which is what the statute says? Then you figure out that prorata has any meaning you want to assign to it. And so we all kind of agreed on a formula that takes into account, uh, use of the road, uh, property values, and, uh, pay. Why should the county do this? And, and the statute says that if the, uh, the improvement is necessary for the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the county. Obviously, with anything that's local, the more local it is, how does, you know, it, it, it certainly affects us more than it does anybody. How does it affect the rest of the county? These roads are, to us, are inconvenient, damaging to our vehicles, and potentially dangerous. And they're, they're going, to be quite honest, within another year or two, if we get any moisture at all, they're going to be basically impassable, you know, portions. And this affects people other than us, uh, the, you know, we do live in the county, and so we do get some services. And like most county people who live in the rural part of the county, it just really becomes apparent to you, you know, what county services are. If you live in the city, you don't see the county services as much. But Potter County Sheriff's Department, the fire department, the fire department in the U M is probably the two most important things, if somebody's going to get to your house. There have been a few times during this rainy season that I'm not sure if an ambulance could come in and could have got out at my house. It, it could have got there because it can slide downhill, but it can't go back up the other way. And I'm not sure, there's been some times that it would be interesting, whether or not even, even the county's four hundred drive fire trucks, whether they would have easily been able to get there. The school district, uh, I'm, I'm, I can't believe it, but I, I've gotten up to, you know, six thirty before and the hill on Hillview, Bushland School Bus is going up that hill and it, he's got to be getting, getting going sixty by the time he hits it, so I'm going to get up it. And you see the line on the top of it bouncing, because that's how much it's bouncing going up there, to go up there and get the kids. And then lastly, the postal service, uh, they actually deliver our mail up Ranch Road about halfway, and so it's, it's a little hard on them too. Bishop Branches represents approximately five, five million dollars in assessed property values. Uh, there's some, built some nice houses out there, we like the country, it was, it, it wasn't Bishop Estates, I'm throwing rocks at them, but the, you know, since there's no zoning, that, that's kind of gotten out of hand. And many of us, when we purchased our land, and, and this is kind of those deals that, I guess, if there'd been collective knowledge, maybe we would all put a stop sign on it. But it was representing, I mean, in our case, it was specifically representative of our builder, that it was, those are county roads, and just there isn't enough people out here yet, no, don't get on. And I didn't think of any reason to question that. It has road signs, which, you know, we know that that only is nine one one. But actually, when you do your property, your, your commitment from top down, you know, it's got easements cut in, it's got roads, it says road, you know, uh, public road there. Uh, and they are public roads, we couldn't close the roads without your authority. In fact, um, uh, one of, one of our residents who lives right on the corner of Tascosa Road and Ranch Road, the roads get so bad, people were starting to scoot over into his grass. And so he does, he's a stone mason, and so he put a bunch of rocks out there, and I think in fact, he dug a bunch of holes. Uh, and then, uh, we came back later on, Road and Bridge had come out and put cones on it, covered them up, and told them and said, well, you can't dig on the road. And no matter how bad it is, you can't dig a hole in it, and so, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of hamstrung on what we can do. Many of us have spent literally thousands of dollars and then guys with tractors who've spent hundreds of hours out there trying to, trying to, uh, keep these up where they're passable. Uh, and, and it's just gone beyond our, our abilities. Uh, there, there's not a mechanism, even if all of us wanted to pitch in and hire it done with the same, uh, money they're asking you for, you for. We couldn't do it practically because we would have no way of enforcing it if somebody in the county didn't do it. And legally, we can, legally, we can. Really, we are probably in violation of the law when we go out and fix that road. Because we're related, it's our road, it's a public road, we're supposed to get your permission to do that. And, uh, and we need your help. We're not asking this for free. Uh, I understand, you know, sitting here, you know, the more we talk about money, and that's a big deal, and it always is for everybody, and it is for all taxpayers. Of course, all my fellow residents out there just go, well, we pay taxes too for all these years. And I talked to them about that and said, look, county taxes are not really that much, you know, your school taxes are real high, your county taxes aren't that much, but you've still been paying them. And, and they're all willing to do this and, and, and pay it back, they just need the help to do it. Uh, the only other mechanism that would be allowed for us to do this would be a road authority, which is extremely cumbersome, would still require, uh, your oversight and require the issuance of bonds. And it's just, uh, probably practically not, not possible for us to do. Our position stands to reason that the roads are improved, now, I, I truly believe, even with the roads how they are, there have been people built since they've gotten pretty bad. Uh, there's a lot of unimproved real estate out there, uh, I think a lot of people will build, I think the tax, the tax base will go up. And, and there's kind of two sets of people out there, there's, there's people like me that moved, moved in and built in the last ten or fifteen years, there's people who lived out there thirty years and driven on the roads. And, and Ranch Road initially had pavement on it, and I think that's why nobody really did much for a long time. And it's, eventually, it just got eaten up so bad that it, that it was, it was, um, uh, impossible to do, so. We're asking you to consider this request. We've outlined, uh, much more detail with, with Commissioner Church, and we have it available, what, what the process is, the learning experience, I know for me, and I think for Commissioner Church, and I think for, for Dave Kemp also. Uh, the statute is like many statutes dealing with public roads in Texas, it goes a little ways and then just kind of stops. It just says, you figure the rest of it out, and that's what we had to try to do. But we're asking you to help us out on it, we're asking you to, to approve the roads, assess that against just in a reasonable timeframe that we can pay it back. Uh, and, and then they would be up to county standards at that point, maintain it above the county. Uh, we believe that in the long run, this is a good thing, not only for us, but for other members of the community, and certainly for, uh, county workers who have to service that part of the county.
Joe Mar, how many families we talking about?
I, I was counting a while ago on my response cards, um, we had about forty-two property owners that, that, that we mailed out to. And I, I've trimmed that down for our initial mailing because I, the people we cut out that didn't want to participate. Uh, obviously, some of those are, are, are a man and wife that responded to that property. Uh, the number of parcels, I believe, is somewhere around twenty-five, something of that nature. Uh, but, but some people own a whole bunch, some people own a very much.
So, and all of those forty-two residents would, uh, have a reading to speak?
Uh, yes, and, uh, I think the, the way we finally determine what roads to be fixed, I, I do not believe, obviously, it would depend on the terms, or the terms can be such that they pull their agreement. But, uh, uh, people that, uh, that would be affected by it, my, my observation, talking about, then it's a hundred percent positive, right?
And David, we, uh, agree that, in, how would, how would this work out with this process?
It's kind of a long, grown out process, of, if you, first you have to, and I think what we're asking you to do is make a determination about whether or not the improvement of these roads would be to the benefit of the whole county, not just these residents. And if you do that, then we've got published notice, uh, and have a public hearing, we've got to give thirty days, thirty-one days, I think, notice of that public hearing. We've got published notice twice, and so you then have a hearing. And then assuming that you wanted to go forward after that, then all of the people who will be paying the assessment get to vote. So we have to send out a ballot to, uh, all of those folks, and, and if they vote yes, then the project proceeds. And you decide, well, before, before you send out the ballot, you decide what you're going to assess, everybody along the period, and we tell them that in the ballot. And they vote, majority approves it, then the project moves forward.
And what happens if those that you assess are not compliant over whatever period is determined, what's the enforcement piece?
There is, they're, they are personally responsible, and there is an enforcement of sorts in statute that says, uh, uh, one thing, it says interest if you want to, that's your option. Uh, and then, uh, you can get a lien, a lien, basically.
It's, it's, the, the, the language is, is almost exactly the same as that for our Texas.
Yeah.
It's the same, there's, there's a lien established, so it doesn't matter.
And does this footprint fall into ETJ as it relates to the estimate, that's what concerned me?
Yes, that's why, that, that, yes, because that's what's caused some of the problems on one of the roads, is we can't get, Hillview, we can't go far enough with it because we can't meet the ETJ standards.
So I feel like this estimate is probably on the lower end, and I'll lean to Sebastian to help me, because this does not account for curbing or anything that ETJ requires.
I'm not sure how that works, because I don't know if this grandfather's in, because it's already an existing road. Or if it's, uh, from what I understand, it, it has to base, uh, on a new addition. Like, if they were just cutting it open all of a sudden out of nowhere, but this one's already been there, so I'm not sure if it falls under that or not.
So we'll confirm that, we'll check if there's anything in addition that's needed?
Yeah. We still haven't, too, we send out the, you have to balance to figure out exactly what's going to be, but at this point, that's what we've come up with.
Okay, and then Dave, you said something that really caught my ear in terms of the court having the ability to, um, add interest to this. Because essentially, we be, we come in the business, we're now in the business of loaning out for dollars.
You can't charge it, the statute says you can't charge it during the first year, if you can, it's going to be two years longer, you can't charge it the second year longer. You can't charge it the second year longer.
And I think that's an important carve-out because I can certainly see if we move in this direction. There may be others in the county that are approaching about those. Some other areas, what are your thoughts about?
There's always been complaints about some, but... The one thing I did put in this estimate was the labor because I'm not sure how long it'd take. Like I said, we're not contracted. We do this type of work all the time. It's not a problem to do it. But I don't know how to estimate fuel and personnel and all that other stuff because there's no way for us to figure out. Either way, we're going to be working. So, it doesn't matter whether we're working here or on another project.
But if you're working here, it's taking you away from a different project. Is that fair?
Yeah, but there's always going to be projects. We're always busy.
And just, just, just full disclosure for the Commissioners Court, the statute says that you can assess all or part of it. So, you can pay part of this yourself. Or you don't have to make the neighbors, the neighborhood bear all the costs of this. You're allowed to do that, but you're allowed to kick in somebody.
But I think the discernment piece, as you started with Dave, is that it is a benefit to all of the tax base of Potter County. And so, that's where some of my line of questions come from.
And I have been, excuse me, I have been approached by maybe two other neighborhoods. And both of those are pretty well discouraged because they can't get people together. This neighborhood has come together. It's close enough to town that I think people would be interested if there was a road there to develop that property. And I think it would be, in the end, when we get it all said and done, increase our values of property out in that area. And I hope that we will look in, in the future, trying to encourage people to buy and develop out there. It's a beautiful part of the county, and I think people would be interested.
Okay, do we need to take this one at a time, Dave? Or can we do all of it at the same time?
I can't order to tell you true.
I think we can do it all.
Yeah, I think, I think we can. And so, what I, and mainly what I need you to do is to set a date for public hearings so we can give those to them. And I, it looks like we're going pretty far. Yeah, I think that's right. That's, I think that's the earliest we could possibly give a notice published that if you wanted to have the hearing and votes at the Commissioners Court.
And well, in terms of the public notice, I know you mentioned it needs to be in the newspaper. Joe, you also mentioned a mail-out to these residents. Well, are we doing anything in addition? I kind of feel like we need to notify them of this public meeting.
Valoting happens after the public meeting.
More notification of the public meeting? So, if they are concerned, they know this is happening?
I can tell you this, I think Commissioner Church backed me up. In the two meetings, the informal meetings that we've had, we've kind of had, we've had a core base, but then we've had, some people were one, some people were the other. Everybody's been, to the extent that they read it and they listen. They've been provided this law. Our first mail-out included a copy of the Transportation Code. It also included a letter that explained it all. A very angelic, completely different presentation was made at both occasions on what was regarding to what would happen. And I think everybody pretty much understood that. And I want to point out too, it's not obvious, we're just talking about it. We say ballot, it's a mail-out ballot, it's not election. So, it's simply a mail-out ballot, and it's, you only count the ones you receive. So, if somebody didn't send theirs in, it just had no effect whatsoever. And so, that's how that kind of works. It's a pretty short timeline on ballot once the hearings have. So, you have to mail, ballots have to go out like ten days after the hearing.
Yeah, I just, because the majority will win. And even if someone doesn't agree with this, they're kind of locked, they're locked in because of the majority. And I'm looking to you guys to keep me honest. So, I just don't know if, in all, full disclosure to those families, if we need to at least make, go a little bit above and beyond the newspaper ad and just send out a postcard and say, "We're having a public meeting here."
Well, I can tell you, I'm sorry to interrupt that. Beyond whatever notice y'all give, we will give a hundred percent notice to get people there because it's obviously important to us. We want to keep the momentum going and not have anybody dial off or disinterest or just to take your busy and do it. So, I mean, whatever else, at this time, I'm just going to tell you, we will make sure everybody knows when it is, where it is, and what's going to happen.
Okay, yes, we have someone who wants to say...
Of course, I appreciate it. Do you want to, would you come up? Oh, sure. I also live in the area.
Okay, give us your name and your address.
This is the man I think was named. And I'm eleven-three, ten headquarters, so I live at headquarters. And he did a fabulous job, so I'm really pleased. And thank you for hearing this. One, two things I want to point out. One is a young mother is not able to be here today. She has two young children, and she refuses to let the kids ride the school bus. It's so dangerous. We have at least six kids out there that are pretty young and coming up in admission schools. And I don't know that they're willing to take advantage of that. I don't like riding the school bus, actually, at this point. It's so incredibly dangerous. So, I didn't want to, she couldn't be here. I wanted to speak for her. And as far as trying to notify people, we did, I know that Joe Martin also, and my husband and I tried twice. I have been to every government agency trying to get information on how to notify everyone. And there are still just a few that we just cannot get any response from. So, I don't know how we do that.
And even a mail-out and an attempt, in my opinion, goes a long way. And I'm just trying to be, I tend to lean on overly aggressive in terms of communicating and notifying. Because I would hate for a resident this to end somewhere down the road and a resident to come say, "I, the county hasn't notified me." And I don't read the paper.
We've been very, very, very concerned about that ourselves.
I think the core people that are participating are getting notice of it. As I said earlier, there's probably three to five absentee property owners in the area that would be concerned with this, that simply have not responded to anything. Their mail doesn't come back, they just, they're not, they don't respond to it. And one thing I would like to note, I was going to say, oh, you know, I forgot, is the law provides that if it gets turned down, it can't be reconsidered for four years. And so, that's why it's become very emergent for us to try to weld together some cohesive support for this plan.
If you have the processes, the verification process is done, and you send out to all the residents out there, twenty-two new residents stand up concerned, and if you do the mail-out ballots, and you get a number of those back, is there a ratio that you have to receive a specific amount before that can be...
It says the majority of ballots received within the timeframe controlled. So, you get, you get two back, you get three back, and two before, and one against, and wins.
Wow.
But, and that is frightening, but I will say this. You have twenty-five people out there that are, that are affected. And we probably have twenty-two that are at the meetings, that are aware. So, it's not a, yeah, we're very comfortable with it.
I don't think it's going to be a problem. And the people that aren't responding, aren't affected, their property is going to be hit the least on the assessment based upon the formula we came up with. And to be quite honest, probably what it, what it should do is it will probably get them to sell their property because they're not doing anything with it. And they're just barely, some of them are barely paying the taxes. So, it's kind of a shift out there in people that just sell on the property for years and didn't do anything with it. And the people that are really interested in developing that area.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
I'm moving, we move forward with Bishop Branch's improvement as far as setting a date for our public hearing. It's like September fourteenth.
Okay, then a motion in second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, number fourteen, Potter County Projects.
Does anyone have some questions?
I don't think anybody has any questions. So, then that. Under fifteen, equipment purchase. Consider next following purchasing two thermal imaging cameras. They're pro fire equipment, amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
You approve the motion that we mentioned, the transfer money to purchase this, and this is just asking permission first.
I have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of two thermal imaging cameras from Dacel Fire Company, the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
For a second? I have a motion in second, all in favor, raise your hand. We have, the general report today is four hundred and seventy-seven. Total eighty-five of the females, all no one, so it was correct, Sheriff. Do we have any county initiatives?
No, we're recording.
No county initiatives? Yes. I'm going to skip to number nineteen. The executive session, we're going to engage the whole executive session to consult the county attorney general regarding the sale of one claimed from the Potter County Courthouse project. Pursuant to Texas Feral Order Section five, Act one, point zero, seven-one, allowing government a lot to conduct the public consultation and discipline of itself and take any action appropriate after the second session. So, it is eleven oh two, we will recess to that. Okay, it is eleven minute thirty-seven. Again, on the back of the question, the primary session, we have no action. I want to read something real fast. We got the kind of thank you card for ankle lifting from the bridge. Thanking us for the money that we gave you on that extra money that we had. I want to thank you for your recent contribution to the bridge. That was a wonderful and unexpected surprise. Thank you for choosing the bridge. I think we should share your receiving advice. It will certainly go a long way in helping the children. And they do serve an awful lot of children in our community, unfortunately. And that means actually, so, anyway, thank you for all that. Now, in anticipation of all your faces, I'm going to have to, have to call recess till one thirty, Sheriff, because I have to be somewhere, and so... And then, we'll be back at one thirty to start the budget process. Okay, we can all go, so disappointed, I'm so sorry. We'll start a little bit back, yeah, at one thirty, and start fresh. Is that okay for everybody? All right, we'll sit in there.